Good evening. Good evening, I'd like to open up the Board of Supervisors work session for October 13th, 2020. Our first presentation is from the Mothers Against Drunk Driving Awards. Sheriff Butler.
Every year, Mothers Against Drunk Drivers, they reach out to agencies to award the officers that have actually taken DUI drivers off the road. When we took over in January, we really hit the ground running, per se, and Sergeant Ryma, who's here with these two young men, young deputies that we have that'll be coming up, Deputy Stevens and Deputy Price, they took it upon themselves to actually take it to heart our vision of which way we, of making Warren County safe. Both of them have pulled 20 DUIs apiece this year, and that's pretty amazing, really, if you think about it, because they work midnights. So, they come in at six o'clock at night, and they work till six in the morning. There's many hours that we know in Warren County that the roads aren't being traveled as much as it would be in the big city, and I know, like in Herndon where the traffic is a lot more condensed, the average DUI individual up there is probably 25. So, for these two individuals from the same squad to pull 20 DUIs, that means they're working their tail off for you in our county. So, I couldn't be any more prouder than to present the two deputies, Deputy Price and Deputy Stevens, with this outstanding award. It really is, it's, this award really is showing Warren County that they're out there working, trying to make the county safer for us all. So, congratulations.
Appreciate it.
This next award is going to go to Deputy Cindy Burke, Master Deputy Cindy Burke. We've had an extraordinary year with, and you guys know it better than anybody. COVID hit, we didn't know if we were going to do the sheriff's camp, didn't know how we were going to do it. Master Deputy Burke took it on her own with Robbie Seal, and they just took off. They started finding ways that we could actually still keep our youth interested in the Warren County Sheriff's Office. And actually, I believe it was Saturday, one of the kids that was there, I saw him out in the community, he just came up and started talking to us like it was nothing. It was right in front of Patty's house, he hangs out over there, I don't know why, but, but anyway. Now, it's really, it really is, it's amazing what Cindy Burke has done for the community. We put her back into the schools because her, her years of service and what she does with the community and the children, it's just really what our, we hope our agency can become in the future, is more community oriented and more professional with that. So, I'd like to give this award, it is the Community Fleeceing Medal. Thank you very much. Now, I gotta read this next one. Deputy Stevens, can you come up? And I really do like doing it here so you guys can actually see what our deputies are doing. Now, I'm gonna tell you, Deputy Stevens is a handful, and Sergeant Ryma will vouch for it, but he is an outstanding deputy. We couldn't be any fortunate to have this, this young man as one of our deputies. Deputy Stevens being presented the Outstanding Service Award. Demonstrating performance above the job requirements expected of a deputy employed by the County of Warren, Deputy Stevens had an interaction with a member of, in our community, and an arrest was made. After the arrest, Deputy Stevens found out that the individual had fallen on hard times and his health, health was declining. Deputy Stevens took it upon himself to stop by, check on the individual while on duty. While checking on the individual, he observed that the individual was struggling to fix his motorcycle. Since Deputy Stevens also rides, and he's actually a really good mechanic, too, he assisted the elder with the repair. Deputy Stevens' act of concern, kindness for the member of the community shows that not only protects it, but also cares for the people in it. Deputy Stevens, your service to this community has not gone unnoticed, and we would like to say thank you. So, he is also receiving the Outstanding Service Award. We have, we have a number more to come, because as you can imagine, we have several life-saving awards and so on and so forth, but we do appreciate you letting us award our deputies in front of you and the community, so they can actually see not just that we're out making arrests, but we are actually doing our jobs and protecting and serving. So, thank you.
To those gentlemen and ladies that are part of this, I just want to let you know that the county thanks you, more than you could know, because you're leaders of your community, leaders of your sheriff's department, and you're, the other deputies should be looking up to you for their guidance, to help them be better sheriffs. So, again, thank you. Anyone else?
I just gotta ask, you guys got competition going on, don't you? Oh, come on. And that's a good thing, I think that kind of friendly competition is great, that you're doing that, and it's, you know, it keeps you awake during the night to do those things, too. That's, that's a long haul, six to six, so we appreciate definitely what you do, and good luck on getting the award next year.
Again, thank you. Is Angie here?
No, sir, she is not.
She is not, okay, then we'll go ahead and skip to the discussion and the overview for General Services Department, Mrs. Rosser.
We will put this, this item on your agenda for next week unless somebody objects. It's pretty straightforward, just New Year's Eve.
Yeah, I don't have any problem with that. Does anyone else?
No, I was just wondering, how come there's so much more material in our packet besides the change of that date? There's stuff about borders, I don't know, their numbering system and everything else, I mean, there's a lot more stuff here than just about changing the date.
This is what, you would have to ask her about that, but this is what she asked for, was the date. She should be back and be here next week, but these are all showing you that December 31st, 2019 vouchers and so forth, all to show everything that was done last year on New Year's Eve, but the courts are closed, so everything has to be held anyway. But I expect her to return and be here next week.
Brandy, are you ready?
I'll wait just one second while they get the TV and the presentation started.
The intent behind these presentations is that you will have a review of each department before you go into the budget. And here's Angie.
Sorry. I'll just.
Okay, Brandy's already started, we'll, yeah, we'll go ahead and jump to you right after this.
I would say since the TV won't turn on, if you want to go back to her, you're welcome to. So, Mike and I will play with this for.
Okay, y'all play with that. Angie, if you'd like to.
Sure, thank you.
Angie's gonna be talking about the Warren County Circuit Court proposed December 31st, 2020 closure. Angie, that's in your court now.
I believe that you all have a packet that I prepared, basically just outlining the problems that we have when we are open on December 31st. Basically, OES is our, the office of the Executive Secretary is our programs provider. They are closed that day, every year. That is a holiday for them, the district courts are not open, we're the only court that is open. Actually, there were only 14 courts in the state that were open this past year. Creates a problem for us, we have to beg for system access, there is no help. This year was a little more troublesome than normal, because we had received a phone call from them on the 31st saying that we could roll our numbers back, because it creates an accounting nightmare, because the end of business, month in business, year in business is all on December 30th. We received a call saying they could roll our numbers back, that's great, let's do that, that'd be easier for us to separate our manual bookkeeping practices. Well, however, the case side didn't talk to the financial side, and we had cases being put in on 2019 date and receipts for those on 2020. So, that didn't work out so well. Just created a little big nightmare, as you can see, I included the systems availability that we get from OES. As you can see, everything indicates month in a calendar year end processing will be done the evening of Monday, December 30th. This one stated, you can see our systems are going to be available at 11:00 a.m., so from nine to 11:00, we had, we could do nothing at all. And then we finally kept hammering away at them, and then it was, we'll get them to you as soon as we can, still no set time, we finally whittled them down to eight o'clock a.m., which, that worked. But, as you can see, all the email correspondence back and forth with me and Richmond, you know, I was there well past, I think it was about 7:15, 7:30, my last email back and forth with them, it was a very long evening. The office staff is more than willing to take an annual day, I believe we're not asking for anything just to have it. It just, believe me, it just creates a huge nightmare for our office, every year, and it's every year that that happens, it's not just this particular year, just this was a little more aggravating than normal. But that, that's the reason that we ask, and we wouldn't ask this lightly, and we don't. And as you can see, there are other times, just because of docketing reasons, that, you know, we're open when the county, other county employees are enjoying a holiday or a day off. November 3rd coming up will be one of those days. We are, that's now a holiday, a state holiday, and, you know, as a circuit court, we need to be there, because someone may be denied their right to vote, and they need to come down and file a petition. So, technically, we could technically be open until 7:00 p.m. that night.
I didn't hear what you said.
We can technically be open until 7:00 p.m. on November 3rd, if someone files petition. So, that's not out of the realm of possibility. But there are just other times that, you know, when we have dockets, we just can't, it's a little more, a little harder for us to just stop, stop motion than it is for some other offices, and that's fine, but that's the reason.
So, may I ask you, why do they not just give you guys the December 31st off, if, if they, they end the year at December 30th anyway?
Circuit courts.
And it's gonna complicate their lives and yours if you work on December 31st?
The problem is, circuit courts don't fall under the same jurisdiction necessarily, because we are independent officers, each court is independent, and some circuit courts are under their county's umbrella, some are not. Some have different rules to follow, some, you know, we're under the county, so we follow the county policy, which is, if the governor doesn't declare a holiday, we're open. And that's where we're running into that problem. But, like I said, there are other times when the county will be closed, and we are open, so it kind of is a balance, per se, and like I said.
I just assumed until this came up that you were closed.
No, no, we're open, we're often open when the district courts are not. District courts are governed by the state, we are not. Circuit courts are different, we fall into a very unusual category, there are 122 circuits, and we can all be very different. We don't all fall under.
Did you say you fall under local?
We follow the county's policy, because our, our deputy clerks are county employees.
Aren't the county offices closed on December 31st, or not?
Well, I'm sure they're gonna be closed by one o'clock, ma'am, I'm certain about that. I believe, since it's on a Thursday, that it is not listed at this point until the board designates, it's not listed as a holiday, which would be a logical thing, but I'm certain that there will be no, nothing completed after one o'clock. So, I think it would be good to honor this request.
Yep, I guess you just put it on next meeting's agenda, and we vote.
Sure, yes.
Yeah, and like I said, it's pretty, it's pretty cut and dry overall, I mean, it is a hassle, we understand that, and, you know, we're not trying to create any, any ripples in the river, so to speak, but this is a huge issue for our office, we have to manually do it, it skews our numbers, for auditing purposes, it doesn't create a clean audit, because it's not a business day, we're operating on two different years on that day, and it, it can create, you know, some issues for us, and just from an auditing standpoint alone, it isn't like.
Years to hope in 2021 is better than 2020.
Well, right, but that's why I'm just trying to propose this, you know, that every 31st that we are, because it, we run into this every year, and like I said, this year was just a little more taxing than, than most, because they thought they could do something, that Richmond thought they could help us do something, and they were trying to be helpful, it just didn't work out. It created, actually, it muddied the waters even further, so, but that's, that's all. But I thank you all for listening and taking this under consideration, we do appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
We may even cancel the board meeting that week.
So, there isn't a board meeting that? I was gonna say, I thought there was only one in December, but.
Well, we're gonna cancel it.
I think everybody kind of sees it that way.
Yeah.
Next item on our agenda is the discussion and the overview of the General Services Department. Brandy, are you ready?
All right, good evening, Chairman Mabe and members of the board. I have been asked tonight to provide you with an overview of my department, how we are organized, what our budget includes, and what our areas of responsibility are. I'll run you through all of those items, provide you with a short list of concerns that we have as we start to develop the FY 21-22 budget, and after covering those items, I wanted to take a few minutes to showcase some of the projects that my staff and I have had the pleasure of being a part of over the years. Some of these projects predate the establishment of the General Services Department, but still involve our current staff. I hope you find the list of projects impressive, I know how hard we've worked on them, along with other departments that we collaborated with. So, with that. Warren County's General Services Department was established in fiscal year 1718. The mission of our department is to provide timely and cost-effective maintenance on buildings and properties, which are owned and operated by Warren County. It is our goal to provide neat, attractive, safe, and hazard-free environments while providing a comfortable work environment for our employees and the public to conduct county business. So, the department's responsibilities include the general maintenance and janitorial services needed to ensure proper upkeep of our county facilities, and we also play an active role in the implementation of the county's capital improvement plan by providing project management and staff support for many projects during the planning and construction phases. This slide shows a broad overview of where my department falls, actually under county administration. I do share a receptionist position with our human resource manager, and report directly to the county administrator. This is a little bit more detail on my actual department itself. We have 13 employees, not including myself, that fall under my supervision, and that includes one project manager, two maintenance technicians, one custodial supervisor, five full-time custodians, and four part-time custodians. The general services budget for FY 2021 is $1,384,135. This amount has seen a gradual increase over the last few years, mainly due to transferring staff from Parks and Recreation. In order to streamline the services being provided, our staff, or to the public, I'm sorry, the two maintenance technicians were moved over to general services, along with one full-time and three part-time custodial positions. This transition has allowed our department to take on full responsibility for the maintenance and custodial services being performed at our facilities. Just to go over some budget highlights, as stated on my last slide, the department's budget is just under 1.4 million, and that includes a staff of 14 with maintenance and custodial services being provided to approximately 30 public buildings and facilities. It does include six vehicles, six cell phones or cellphone stipends, and outside the personnel cost, our budget is dominated by electrical service, which is about 15% of the overall budget, and general maintenance, which is roughly 16. The budget is very closely tied to our capital outlay line items and special project budget as well, and that's due to a lot of the projects having a higher price tag. We want to make sure we get the money appropriated ahead of time, so that we have it in hand when we get ready to implement.
Can I ask you a question?
Of course.
You went over it, I just kind of missed some of it, but in the previous slide, you explained why the, the budget increased from fiscal year 19 to fiscal year 20, because you took on more people, or what exactly?
From 19 to 20, let's see.
19 to 20, went from 285 personnel to 506.
That was the transition of the two full-time maintenance technicians, and then later on, actually, the custodial positions didn't get moved over immediately, so the full-time custodian and part-time custodian positions actually came over a little bit later.
But they were still in the budget, they were just in.
They were, they were in the Parks and Rec budget, so the positions were already funded, we just transferred them over to my department, just to streamline our, our work.
And then the same thing, the increase from 20, fiscal year 20 to 21, there's another 112.
And that's probably where the, the actual custodial positions were moved over, because initially, when the budget came out, they had only moved over the maintenance technicians, but they transferred the funding over from Parks and Rec to my department for the custodial positions, and also some custodial supplies and stuff like that for them to use.
Or less of reorganization.
That's correct.
Thank you.
So, when Parks comes in, you should see the drop, sir.
General Services is responsible for the following, we plan, prioritize, schedule, assign, and review maintenance programming. I won't read every single one of these, but a lot of those are lighting repairs and replacement, that's both interior and exterior, so we take care of all of our parking lot lighting at facilities as well, plumbing repairs, HVAC maintenance and replacements, renovations, those are both large and small, all of our locking and security systems, doors and that type of thing, fire suppression systems, backflow systems, sprinkler systems, fire extinguishers, and fire alarm panels, so if it's related to fire suppression in our building, we are responsible for having that inspected annually and maintaining it. Emergency lighting, generator maintenance, commercial kitchen hoods and fire suppression, that's an annual inspection as well, elevators, pest control, utilities, and also prioritizing the work orders that come in on our software system. When it comes to custodial services, we do general daily cleanings, we also do annual deep cleanings of certain items, such as carpets and stuff like that. As far as COVID-related activities, I do want to point out that I think a lot of people think of our first responders as being the ones that have the increased exposure, but I just can't say how much, how, or how great my staff has been on taking on this additional responsibility. They're in there cleaning surfaces every two hours, ordering storied inventory and distributing, like personal protective equipment and appropriate cleaning supplies, maintaining all of our SDS sheets, we started doing electrostatic deep cleanings on all of our facilities, the installation of barriers and building inspections, administration extension and social services. We're getting ready to, well, once it gets approved, start mandatory treatment of courtrooms and common spaces at the courthouse once jury trials resume, and we've also been doing a lot of emergency cleanings after potential exposures. So, we've had at least 10 of those where we had to go in spaces in full gear and basically disinfect the space, because of the potential of somebody being exposed. As far as the capital improvement plan, we do a lot of project planning and development, plan review, permitting, that's both internally with our building inspections department and planning department, as well as external agencies as required, coordination of procurement, contract administration, project and budget management, coordination with the Historical Society on renovations to facilities such as the courthouse, staff support during project implementation, and then closeout documentation, such as warranties, as-built, operation and maintenance manuals, and that type of thing. And finally, for the items that aren't always considered to be under General Services, but this is certainly part of what we do, is the grant coordination and writing. Since I came on in 2009, this is a service that we've offered to all of our departments and constitutional offices, and to date, we've brought in just over 7.4 million dollars. So, since 2009, I think that's fairly impressive. Grant management, for anybody that has written grants before, the writing of it is really just the first step. When the real work starts coming in is when you're having to do all of the reporting, the project implementation, completion of environmental studies, project oversight, permitting, procurement, like all of those items. So, that definitely takes up a lot of time. Also, with procurement, over the last few years, I've taken an active role in the county's procurement process. Some of these activities include preparing documents, such as invitation for bid, emergency procurement documentation, and sole source documentation. Two good examples of the emergency procurements that we recently did were the phone systems for the government center and courthouse. Our staff also manages these, manages these approved contracts for designated county functions. We also do a lot of interior design work, since my college degree is actually in interior architecture, we typically try and pull those services away from an architect, where we may spend 30, 40, or 50,000 dollars just for the actual process, not even the furniture. So, we try and do that in-house if possible, we do a lot of interpretive signage at our parks. We also serve as the county representation on a variety of boards and committees. Over the years, it's included a lot, it's been the Blue Ridge Committee, Celebrate Shenandoah Committee, Building Committee, Broadband Committee, Emergency Operations Leadership Team, Warren Clark Micro Enterprise Assistance Project, Warren County Telecommunications Management Team, RS Regional Jail Authority, and the Corridor Connector Project. I still do list website and social media management, before Mrs. Shrocky came to the county, that was actually something that I handled. While I don't do as much of it now, Emily and I are really the only two people that have full access to those accounts. So, if something was to happen to both of us, there'd probably be a little bit of a problem, so. And lastly, just the management of rental properties. Finally, the budget concerns for FY 21-22. I think every year, I think one of my main concerns is hiring and keeping qualified staff. Right now, I have a wonderful group that is very dedicated, I know I can always depend on them, so I really want to keep that team together, because we work very well together. Additional COVID requirements, and staff burnout. I do have some staff that's working 50, 60 hours a week, some of these buildings, we can't come in and do electrostatic treatment while staff is here, so we have to come in at 4:30, 5:00 in the morning and handle it, or we're in here at 8:30 or 9:00 at night, we're in here Saturdays, Sundays, whatever we need to do. The possible addition of county-owned properties is always a concern, just for additional maintenance, utilities, pest control, and that type of thing. Aging facilities and infrastructure, I do see over the next several years, some roof replacements and HVAC replacements that will need to take place, many of which are already in our capital improvement plan. Fire marshal inspections, once we really get those going, I do see a cost associated for those. The grant writer position is something I have certainly spoke with Mr. Mabe about, the potential, like the potential of adding that back into the budget and going for even more than we are right now, there's a lot of opportunity out there. And finally, just the new vehicle for the department, this is an expense that's been set aside over the last several years, it's sitting in special projects, when we get ready to do it, it will have no impact on my budget for the actual, or the purchase, the money is already sitting in special projects. I'll try and go through these very quickly, but I definitely wanted to highlight some of our great projects. These have either been completed over the years, or in the process of being completed. First, we have Easton Park, this is one of the first projects I was given when I came to Warren County. The park includes over a mile and a half of walking trails, a dog park, three multi-use athletic fields, a small playground, parking area, boat landing, and an outdoor classroom. In total, we received almost $900,000 in grant funding, including 250,000 from VDOT to improve Lou Ray Avenue leading to the park. two hundred and fifty thousand from VDOT to improve Lou Ray Avenue leading to the park. Rockland Park, without getting into too much into this purchase because it is a very large property, the county purchased the two hundred and nineteen acre property in two thousand nine. It was then known as the Fishnet Property. Over time, the county has implemented portions of the master plan, and improvements include walking trails, large playground, music park, disc golf course, exercise stations, shelters, multipurpose playing fields, parking areas, and roadway improvements. The county has received approximately seven hundred thousand dollars for this park and grant funding to assist with completing these projects, and we look forward to the possible renovation of the bathhouse next.
Quick question?
Okay.
The master plan, is that on the website?
It is.
Okay, I thought it was.
So, and we did do some revisions after getting into a couple of the phases, because we started moving stuff around a little bit. Originally, we said maybe this could be an elementary school site. We've kind of nixed that idea for now. We looked at a fire rescue training facility, which may not be as feasible at this point if we are to do the ESA lane property.
Try to do it as far as pay-as-you-go type of thing, like you said, you had a lot of grants for that, too, and then, I know one thought was, I don't know if that's in there or not, but there used to be a stage there?
There is, there's an amphitheater included. It's kind of in like the bottom right area. We would love to get that in there. I could see it easily being a five hundred thousand dollar project, once you get everything associated with it. We also want to make sure that we have the appropriate parking and restroom facilities to get that facility constructed.
Yeah, with some talk as far as the Fourth of July thing that's held up at the Four-H Center, move it down there, because you may have a lot easier access and things of that nature.
Oh, I definitely think so, and again, once we get the parking areas in there, I think it opens us up for what type of events or festivals or anything else we could hold at the property.
Yeah, with LPDA, we have them kind of on standby on contract for different projects?
They're on an annual term contract right now, so we are able to utilize their services without putting the project up or out for bid.
I have a question, okay, if you don't mind, I would like to go back to the dog park, to Easton. Is there a potential for expanding that walking trail around the river further? Is there any potential? Has that ever been considered in the?
What section are you?
Well, so, so it's exactly two point one and one point eight miles round trip. So what I've heard a lot from people is, wouldn't it be awesome if it went further down the river and kind of followed?
Like onto the old Abtech's property?
Exactly, since we own much of that as well.
Yeah.
So is, has there ever been any consideration for extension of that walking?
There has.
Because it could be like a river walk.
We applied for DuPont funding to actually extend the trail. That way, it gets a little bit more difficult because of the restrictions on the Abtech's property, that you can only disturb the ground so much. So you can't dig down in the ground, it gets a little bit harder to make it ADA, so depending on what kind of funding you have on it, if it has an ADA requirement, there's a chance we wouldn't be able to meet it.
Kind of be allowed to have a path through it, but you couldn't have any facilities at all, like no benches or restrooms or anything.
If we were to pour like a concrete pad, we couldn't really level the ground out very much, we would have to have the pad directly on top of whatever ground is there.
Because it's set up right now as it stands, it's a passive park, like Dr. Daley said. And I think you could put trails through there, but it would probably have to be mulched.
It would be mulch or some type of like?
Rubberized thing, or something like that, and then again, like you said, it'd make it more difficult.
It's beautiful, if we could ever get the trail out that way, that section of the river is very, very nice.
It's gorgeous, and a lot of the people who run on the trail by, you know, through Easton would love to have an extension, and maybe, you know, have three, four, or five miles of running. You know, we have cross-country teams, I mean, they utilize this, these trails all the time.
I think if we could find an appropriate funding source, we could, we could probably find a solution.
We'd probably need a grant writer, too.
So. Just a few pictures from Rockland Park. The top left is a shelter that we actually received funding from Rotary for, so that was, we try and go out and get sponsorships for these items. This was a twenty-five thousand dollar donation over five years. So while it was constructed in-house, the actual material cost was paid through that donation. On the bottom left is the walking trail. We actually have two grants for the walking trails, one that leads from the golf course over to Rockland Park, that was funded through Department of Forestry, and then we have a Department of Conservation and Recreation grant for just over a hundred thousand that did another section of the trail that kind of loops around in the area where the amphitheater will be, Mr. Carter. The playground's another wonderful project that we worked on with Parks and Rec, that was something that was paid for in-house, but it is certainly one of our most-used facilities, and everybody loves it. The Warren County Community Center, this is the former Sambro's Public Library that was renovated in January of two thousand eleven. Their renovation of the facility is made possible by grant funding through the Small Business Administration and the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Both of those were secured with the assistance of Representative Frank Wolf. Of the approximately eight hundred thousand dollar cost to renovate the building, just over six hundred and ninety thousand of it was grant-funded. The facility houses a portion of our Parks and Recreation Department, along with some other small agencies that use some of the small classroom space there. The Warren County Public Safety Building is the home to our Department of Fire and Rescue Services and Sheriff's Office. This facility was opened in October of two thousand twelve and includes forty-four thousand three hundred and seventy square feet. It cost just over ten point five million dollars. The building is LEED Silver certified, it's heated by energy-efficient hydronic radiant system and energy-saving LED lighting. The RSW Regional Jail is one that I was pretty heavily involved in with the authority. It is the home for the regional jail for Rappahannock, Shenandoah, and Warren Counties. It opened in June of two thousand fourteen and has approximately a hundred and seventy-nine thousand square feet. The cost for the facility was about fifty-six million dollars. The capacity at opening was three hundred and seventy-five inmates, that was single-bunked, so there is the ability to increase some of that, and it is a LEED Silver certified facility, which includes many sustainable features that have resulted in energy use reduction, water use reduction, and wastewater volume reduction.
And that fifty-six million, that was the total cost?
That was the construction cost.
That's what I mean.
Yes, I just didn't want to say, it wasn't like architects, engineers, like that type of thing.
No, it's also the thing, too, is that the reason we went in with the other two counties was because I think the state wound up paying twenty-five percent?
I believe it was fifty at that point, and that was the last year that the state contributed fifty percent of funding to regional jail facilities, so really, at that point, it was a really good move to get this facility constructed.
Maybe you said, maybe I didn't hear, but does your department do anything with it now?
At this point, other than, there's been some COVID stuff that I've done with them, but now we no longer have anything to do with it, we're more involved in the planning and construction of the facility.
That's what I thought, just to make sure.
Yeah, their inmates take care of the lawn and stuff like that, they have their own facilities crew and IT staff. Resi Jeffrey is the building renovation and playground. Our staff assisted with the project management and construction administration for the school's renovation that was completed a few years ago. The project scope included the expansion of the parking areas, addition of a main entrance, new roof, new boilers, new windows and window treatments, HVAC, gymnasium renovation, doors, flooring, and other finishes. In total, more than five million dollars was spent on the renovation, but for the playground portion, their parent-teacher organization actually has raised all the money that has paid for the equipment that's been installed on the playground. Truly one of the best fundraisers I've seen for a school, they've done a wonderful job. We're about two and a half phases into the full, I guess, design of the playground. There's still some equipment that will be ordered and installed as they have funding. So I get updates from their principal about the amount of funding that they have left, and we can kind of ballpark what we could do for that amount once they're ready to go.
Can I ask you a question?
Uh, oops.
This is the first time I've seen an aerial picture. Is, and I worked there for a long time, so I remember all the roof issues that were there. The green part, that's all new roof for sure.
It is, and that's pitched.
The white part, is that, was that also new roofing, just a different type?
It's new roof, but it was kept flat. To cut the price down, instead of having all the roof pitched like the green is, certain sections of the school actually do still have the flat roof.
Okay, even, even that section in between, it's a hallway that goes down the main, it looks like a stripe in it, and that's new as well? It looks different than?
I will double-check and let you know for sure, but I believe the entire facility was re-roofed.
And are they still having issues with the air conditioning there? I was told that's frequently a problem.
I haven't heard that, I can check with Greg Livace with the school system, since they handle their HVAC work. We haven't been involved in the HVAC since the project was actually wrapped up.
Okay, I just saw the, I assume that's the boiler area there?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. For the last few years, the county's been working on a bus pickup and drop-off area for the residents living in Blue Mountain, Shenandoah Farms, Skyland Estates, and Friesland Manor, and that's this facility that's located off of Friesland Road, is known as the Thompson-Kissin' Ride. The goal of the project was to provide a safer environment for students and parents that utilize the bus transportation. It's a three-point-one-nine acre parcel property that was purchased from the Department of Game and Inland Fisheries, or Department of Wildlife Resources now. Our Warren County Public Schools currently does have one route that uses this, along with a special needs bus. They are also looking to reassign students to other, or from other bus stops, just because it's a very safe area with parking and a bus turnaround. So, to date, we've been able to complete the construction of the parking area, turnaround, shelter, bio-retention ponds, and a small swing set. We're getting ready to install the solar lighting in the parking lot, and a small playground will be installed in two thousand twenty-one.
I thought there was a playground already up there.
There's a swing set, and I think it has two or three swings on it. This will be just a small, if you're familiar with the playground at Easton Park, right when you pull in the parking lot, something that's fairly small like that. We have gotten some grant funding for it already, some of the homeowner associations have also pledged money, since it'll be a facility that they'll be able to use, since they'll actually have a park in that area now. Also, over the last few years, we've installed three music parks, thanks to the very generous donations of Lorraine Holquist. The top two pictures are the music park from Rockland Park, where she donated just over twenty-one thousand dollars for the installation of that equipment. The bottom pictures are from Lions Park, where Ms. Holquist donated almost nineteen thousand dollars for that project. We've also installed a third music park at Burl Brooks', which, I apologize, that's the bottom-left corner, it is Burl Brooks'. So we now have three full music parks, thanks to her donations. I've seen them used quite a bit, it's something we can easily have our staff install, and the fact that she bought the equipment has just been wonderful. For boat landings, Warren County's been actively working to improve public access to the Shenandoah River. The top two photographs are from Farms River View, that was constructed with the help of a fifty thousand dollar grant from the Department of Wildlife Resources. The bottom two pictures are Simpson's Landing, that received a similar grant of twenty-five thousand. That is like a canoe launch, with the first one being from motorized boats. Both projects have been well-received and very much enjoyed by our citizens. Our next boat landing that'll be constructed is the Morgan Ford Bridge landing. Morgan Ford is critical due to the fact that it provides access to the mainstem of the Shenandoah River, and it is heavily used by the public. It's definitely underdeveloped as an access point, and construction of this access would improve water quality by reducing stream bank erosion. Excuse me. Much of the work required for this project will be completed in-house. We have received a hundred thousand dollar grant from the Department of Wildlife Resources through the DuPont Foundation, and we see the total project cost being roughly a hundred and fifty thousand. We hope to have this project constructed in early two thousand twenty-one. I feel like we'll have the construction documents back later this month, those will be sent to the state for review, building inspections, and I'll make sure you guys have a copy as well.
When do we have the final design for Morgan Ford?
Once we get the construction documents, they'll have to go out for review, then we'll come out with a preliminary final set, so I would hope that that would be done close to the end of this year, and then we can really get our staff going on it. The final boat landing is located in Bentonville off Indian Hollow Road. This is a two-point-one-nine acre site that's owned by the Department of Wildlife Resources. We have submitted a grant for a hundred thousand dollars to the DuPont Foundation, seeking to do improvements to this. It is, it is very heavily used, we're seeing a lot of cars parked along the roadway, and it has become a safety concern. To address the known issues with the landing, we are proposing to expand and upgrade the existing parking area, to upgrade the existing boat landing, the creation of a new concrete boat ramp, and enhance site amenities, which will include signage, a portable restroom, possibly a metal gate if we feel like that's needed.
Do we have an estimate on that?
That right now is probably sitting at about a hundred and twenty-five thousand, if we are incredibly conservative. So we will have to eliminate a few of the things that were originally proposed, just to ensure that we don't go over one acre of disturbance and have to buy DEU credits.
How much is the grant money?
A hundred thousand, and that'll be announced in January. So if we can, if we can get the project budget down as close to a hundred thousand, great, we can come back with a phase two later on and add some additional amenities if we feel like that's appropriate.
And that's where you wanted to talk about the hydrant?
Right, it is as far as?
The dry hydrant up there?
The hydrant from the fire department to draft, because this is the main area of drafting water.
I've spoken to both Jerry Myatticoe and Rick Farrell about this, I actually talked to Rick about it today. There is grant funding out there for dry hydrants, so while it won't be included in the actual project budget that's being submitted to DuPont, I do feel like it's something that we could easily implement.
Okay.
Brandy, I have a question on Morgan Ford. Did we resolve the lighting issue, like whether it was going to be low, whether it was going to be high, because that was a concern? We had the public hearing of a lot of the residents, did we resolve that in this plan?
We've agreed to bump it down to approximately two lights.
Okay.
Mainly one right at the ramp, so that if somebody gets stuck in a rainstorm, or it takes them a half an hour longer to float down the river than they expected, and they're trying to get their boat out of the water, that they can see where they're backing up, or they can see their kids as they're getting out of the water. We may do one additional light as they lead to the parking area, but we will do a lighting study as part of the construction plans that'll basically determine that we're not causing light pollution, we're not affecting the wildlife, we're not affecting local residents. I feel like it's going to be very minimal, there's not going to be huge spotlights shining all over the facility.
That was a concern of the, if you recall. I just wanted to find out the status of that.
And are you going to be looking at solar lighting there instead of electrical lighting?
With the tree line, I think it's going to be difficult to do that. I don't know that they would get enough sunlight really to charge the lights and stay lit. If we can get away with that, I think it'd be wonderful, but again, the lighting's-
And it would be less expensive as well, wouldn't it?
It would be, the lighting that we're putting up at Thompson-Kissin' Ride was cheaper, but it definitely had an opening large enough for the lights to charge during the daytime.
Okay.
The Appalachian Trail Connector is the next project, it's a roughly two-mile trail that begins at the Town-County Light on Remount Road. The first phase runs along the east side of the roadway to Conservation Drive, which is the main entrance for the Smithsonian Conservation Biology Institute. The second phase continues from there, terminating at the trailhead of the Appalachian Trail Connector. A more defined budget for this project is being developed, but it has received five hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars in grant funding from the Federal Highway Administration. Additional funding will be applied for to assist with the construction. This is a very large project, this is, this is really just the first phase of it. A two-mile trail is not something cheap to build, it will be all in VDOT right-of-way, so we won't have any land acquisition costs, but there is some concerns with wetlands, we're trying to separate people from the roadway as much as possible, while addressing the concerns of SCBI, that we don't have people getting too close to their endangered species habitats.
Now, you said that there was five hundred and twenty-seven K worth of funding already?
There is.
Do we already have that in hand, or is it just?
Well, we'll have to, we'll have to spend it and apply for reimbursement.
Okay.
So it comes from the Federal Highway Administration, it's administered by VDOT, it's the same funding that we've used for all of the Easton Park trails, basically.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Just to very quickly go over a couple, this is a splash pad that was constructed, was constructed and opened in October twenty nineteen, it was roughly a hundred thousand dollars. Uh, it was roughly $100,000 paid for from several grants, including 15,000 from the Dominion Foundation, um, almost 13,000 from the Warren Coalition, and 6,000 from the Rotary Club of Front Royal. Um, it did open in October of last year, but it's been closed, um, since that time due to COVID. This was kind of about 90% through construction. We ended up adding some landscaping and sod and stuff like that as well. We've also sealed and, uh, colored the concrete a nice blue color, so, um, once we're able to open it, I feel like it's gonna be a facility that's used a lot. Um, everybody's seen the "Love Work" sign. Uh, while this project is on hold, I did wanna mention it, as we did invest quite a bit of time in the development of it. Uh, whether we go with this design or this location, um, or not, I really think it's a very neat project. I hope to see this, it gets implemented somewhere. Um, but a lot of thought went into it. Uh, Joe Petty with the Planning Department put in a lot of work, probably more than anybody else, uh, so I really enjoyed working with them on that. We've done a lot of small-scale renovations lately. The top-left picture is the former voter registrar office where our finance office is now located. Uh, the bottom-left is actually a work in progress. We are working on the cafeteria at the Health and Human Services Complex for the thermal shelter, so we're repainting, um, and really cleaning up the space, ensuring that it has proper fire extinguishers, exit lighting, um, and that type of thing. We'd like for them to be as comfortable as possible there. We've got a washer and dryer that we've added and hooked up, so they'll be able to use that. Um, also ensuring that just the whole facility is, is up to standards where it needs to be. Uh, the right picture is the former Eddie's Laundromat. Uh, a couple months ago, we finished the asbestos remediation, um, in that building, um, and have basically gutted it. Once we figure out, um, who might be interested in moving into the space.
Excuse me? That's the one behind us over here?
Yes, sir. Uh, it has two apartments above it that we currently rent. Um, once we know what type of business or anybody is interested in it, it'll be a little bit easier to start renovating the inside some. Uh, we didn't wanna do too much with it until we figured out, um, who is interested in the space. Uh, one of the largest projects that we've taken on in the last several years is the Health and Human Services Complex. Uh, this is the former middle school on, um, 15th Street. Over the years, we've invested over $12 million in this building to renovate the gymnasium, install a new roof, install EFS on the exterior of the building, new windows, um, added and improved parking areas, uh, renovated spaces for the Health Department, Social Services, Voter Registar, uh, Warren County Public Schools, diversified mines, and Special Services programs, um, and the courtyard playground.
We also get, um, rent, rent from DSS, I guess Public Health to help us.
We do. The Health Department and DSS do pay rent on that, um, and I would have to look at the number of years that the repayment will take, but that rent will go back, um, to directly fund the renovations that we did for their spaces.
And is your roof holding up pretty good?
Um, it's been great. We really haven't had any roof leaks in there. Um, it's an older building, so every once in a while, we'll come up with a, an HVAC issue or something like that, but the roof has been fantastic. Um, adding the EFS on the outside of the building and the new windows has also made it, uh, much more energy efficient.
That's very unusual for a flat roof to hold up that well.
Yeah. So, it was, it's been an interesting facility to, uh, to remodel. Um, the final spaces that need to be renovated are the Maintenance and Food Services Department for the school system. Um, those have been space-planned. The school system will be responsible for the cost of renovating those areas. Um, and also the cafeteria and kitchen areas for the Shenandoah Area Agency on Aging. Uh, we are currently looking for grant funding for that space. It is gonna be over a million dollars probably to renovate it, um, but it could create a really great space for them.
Is the big gym area, is that staying up the way it is, open, and is it, does the school participate in using that gym area?
Yeah, they're diversified mines and, um, Special Services do use the gym during the day for physical activity. Uh, Parks and Rec still uses it. We came in, um, renovated the gym, we got everything painted, we fixed the bleachers, uh, refinished the floors. We renovated the two bathrooms in the front to make the bathrooms ADA accessible, um, so it's actually a pretty nice space right now.
The gym was also used for, um, housing the homeless during the COVID...
It was the thermal shelter space last year.
Right.
Uh, we have moved that into the cafeteria space. The gym honestly was a little bit too big for them. Um, it's, it's kind of easier to, for somebody to be there at night and watching everybody in the smaller space. Um, it also frees up our gym for Parks and Rec activities. Uh, these are just a few pictures from some of the renovation work. This was during the Social Services and Health Department renovation. Uh, the picture on the left is obviously the new entrance that was added. Uh, the top right is the lab for the Health Department, and the bottom right, um, is the office area for Social Services. Um, I wanted to walk you guys through just real quick, like our typical process for some of our renovations. Um, what you see here is a space needs analysis, um, for the possible expansion of our Commonwealth Attorney's Office. Uh, staff worked with our architect, architect to develop a needs analysis that would serve the office's need through 2040, and this is kind of what you come up with. Uh, you look at your personnel needs over the next several years, uh, the typical square footage that would be required for each of those positions, um, and basically plan out how many square feet you're gonna need, um, through 2040. So, we take that, and we come into a space plan. This is actually the old work release building. This is the first floor where we've space-planned, um, for offices, uh, conference room, the victim-witness coordinator, paralegals. Um, and then you get into the second floor, which again duplicates many of those spaces. Uh, our next step in this process will be, um, to get an estimate on what it would cost to renovate this building to accommodate these spaces. Uh, if we decide that we wanna move forward with that, we'll get, um, we'll do an invitation for bids and really get that out and start getting final pricing, um, to move forward with the renovation.
What about the, um, 'cause I know this was discussed at the last meeting, work session. And I think that Dr. Daley said something about there was space on the third floor. I think maybe you meant the old jail?
Yes, the second floor of Court Holding. I did go look at that space. This space, because it's two levels, we can provide a duplication of service on each level, which would mean that we don't have to put in an elevator or make the second floor ADA accessible. Um, as long as we can provide the services that somebody that needs the ADA accommodations on the first floor, the second floor, they don't have to be able to have access to it. The second floor Court Holding, since the only access is through the stairway off East Jackson, uh, we would have to actually install an elevator to be able to use that space. So, uh, we could certainly make, or we can pay for that if everybody wants to, but it, it would probably cost quite a bit more money to renovate that space and get the elevator in there.
So, which building are we referencing that we're looking at renovating for this?
This is, I'm gonna call it the wrong one, 8 East Jackson. It's the former work release building.
Okay.
I think there's a beauty, beauty shop like right down from there. But it's actually a, um, pretty sizable space. We wouldn't have to really mess with the envelope of the building or much of the load-bearing, uh, walls and stuff. Um, so it's a complete gut. We're gonna have to replace all the electrical HVAC and everything like that, but like I said, it is, we could make it ADA accessible, uh, without the addition of an elevator, and, uh, hopefully minimize the cost on that end.
And it looks like it's gonna be a better space than what I was talking about over there.
Okay.
This is...
Either one of them, we're gonna have to do an asbestos abatement and probably lead paint as well, um, so we, we are gonna have to invest a significant amount of money to get that done in any older facility.
In our previous work session, we were speaking about the, the jail, the former jail, and then there, then there's the Sheriff's Department Building across the street on Jackson. That's also space that is available.
It is. That has been marked to eventually be torn down for additional parking, um, and then quite a bit farther down the road, um, it would be the site for the new JDR Court. Uh, just a couple other quick projects. We have the re-roofing of the North Warren Volunteer Fire Department. Uh, last year, we went through, um, and did a lot of work on the exterior of the building, including EFS repairs and repainting. Um, we now have an approved contract to re-roof the project for 105,000. Uh, we have approximately $100,000 set aside, a little bit more now. And that funding, um, is from the Proffers Associated with Blue Ridge Shadows. So, it can only be used for capital projects for this station. So, we do already have the money in hand. The contract is with our attorneys right now. As soon as that is, uh, finished, it'll, uh, actually, we'll be ready to do the notice to proceed. Uh, fire and rescue training facility. Um, I worked very closely with fire and rescue on the design and, um, bid of this project. Eventually, it should be located out at the ESA Lane property. Um, now that we've gotten some of the grant results back and they've been favorable, um, I feel like we may be able to, to look into moving into implementing this project now. Um, I know Fire Marshal Matico had talked about getting a committee together, um, and discussing whether or not we will still utilize this type of construction, or if we'll, we'll go into a, a more typical construction and, um, go after some grant funding for it.
And are you still considering the same space that has been considered?
Yes, and our CUP is good for another year, um, so, um, I think we'll be ready to go on that. If, if we can finalize the design and we know that we have the funding, we'll get it back out to bid again.
I think he told me that this design would last about 10 years.
I believe that's roughly how much it is. Uh, the good part about these type of designs, whether they go with them or not, um, is if one of those containers was, was to burn out or they needed a replacement, a lot of the time, you can replace one of them and not the entire thing. Um, but I think now they may be looking at more of a brick-and-mortar solution, um, if they can find the grant funding to, to pay for it. Uh, finally, our big project is Rivermont Fire Department. Um, the project kicked off in the summer of 2019, scheduled to be completed in the fall of this year. Um, I'd say we're about 95% complete. Uh, the construction cost is about 5.6 million. Uh, that includes the fire station, a multipurpose space that'll be used for, uh, Fire Department fundraising and events, along with a polling place. Uh, the building's about 1,500 square feet, um, and I think we're hoping toward the, the middle-ish, um, of November to have the ribbon cutting on that, um, and eventually an open house for the community. So, there's an updated picture of the front of the building, since the red has been added.
You said 1,500 square feet, or?
15,000, sorry if I misspoke. Uh, just a couple more pictures for you. The left is the apparatus bay. Um, work on that is just about done. Top-right corner is the gym. Uh, they have had equipment, um, donated, so that's been great. Um, and the bottom is the turnout gear, uh, room off the apparatus bay. So, I will stop talking now. Um, I probably talked a little more than I needed to, but I just wanted to make sure you guys had a full awareness of what my department works on, uh, what our budget contains, um, and really what we thought our challenges were coming up.
Is there any communication between Rivermont Fire Department and their old station and the property that they have?
Um, since they own it, I haven't really had any discussions with them about their intentions of it. Sometimes they've talked about selling it, other times turning it into like a, like a park area. Um, I could certainly reach out to fire and rescue and Rivermont staff and find out.
I'd like to discuss that with you at some point.
Okay.
Did we ever get them a cost analysis of, uh, how much it was gonna cost them to, to heat the building and cool it? I know that was a concern.
Um, I believe our project manager provided them with that information. Uh, they requested it from our architect. Um, and while it was a little bit of a guesstimate, um, I believe that was provided to them several months ago. Um, in the coming months, we're definitely gonna have to hammer out a lease for them, uh, that'll be similar to something like a, a North Warren, that outlines what they're responsible for as far as utility payments or, or utility, uh, costs, repairs, that type of stuff, and what the county will actually be responsible for.
Okay. And I talked with one of the members, um, this past weekend, and they were saying they still didn't have a good idea of, of that, and it's worrisome for them, because they haven't been able to fundraise.
Yeah, they've been provided with the, the draft contract for North Warren, um, and really, I, I think it's gonna be quite similar to that. But I will certainly start working with our attorneys to make sure that we have that lease, um, drafted, so that they can look at it, um, and we can get everything in place before they go into the facility.
And the county owns that building now, just like North Warren, correct?
Yes.
And then they'll be responsible for the renovations of their community room, and they'll have to carry their own insurance on the county policy too, with the fire?
Um, now, the insurance, I haven't discussed with them, but they were responsible for the outfitting of that space. So, uh, we agreed to a certain point to have, um, the community space completed and constructed. Um, they paid for the finishes of it. So, um, yes, to a certain extent, they did pay for what, what went in there.
Like I said, the building would be on the county's insurance, and then the, the fire trucks and everything else that's not owned by, the county would be on the, the Rivermont's.
That's my understanding, yes.
That's how it should work. And you, you mentioned too, early on, that, um, you have maintenance and custodial services being provided to approximately 30 public buildings and facilities, but you didn't really list those. Can you provide us with a list of those, maybe?
I can. I have a spreadsheet that breaks down the facilities that we own and what we provided each of those facilities, whether...
You know, you got this one, you've got the courthouse.
When we start, yeah, looking at rental properties, the apartments, the fishnet house, all of the concession stands in all of our Parks and Rec facilities, um, like the kitchen at Ben Crosby, we have to maintain the, the commercial hood that's in there. Uh, we've really picked up a lot of facilities.
It would just be nice to have that list, and it sounds like you have, and just get it to us whenever.
Of course.
Or you can wait long enough, we'll forget about it.
Anyone else?
Yeah, does anybody else have anything?
Well, thank you for your time.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Next is the overview from Public Works Department. Mike, or Mr. Barry?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, board members. I can tell you my picture's a trash, won't be as pretty as the buildings. Take this out.
Thank you. I can't hear when somebody's running around.
Yeah. And I'm hoping that I get a, a slide up here. Um, we were having some technical difficulties earlier. But, um, anyway, we'll just get started talking. Similar to Brandy, um, and not similar, Public Works Department is relatively new and relatively not. We've had public works functions for years and years. Um, we have had refuse collection and refuse disposal and street signs. And in years past, street signs have been handled by, um, refuse folks, or they've been handled by Parks and Recreation. And we'll talk about that a little more, um, I hope. I, I think last week, we had some good work session discussion on, um, sanitary districts and, and POAs, and, um, I'm hoping that I can give you a little better understanding of our budgets, um, and how they function, and, and the department in general, and what we do. And I'm gonna break it down kind of in sections, 'cause, um, we have multiple, multiple budgets and, and multiple departments. So, I'm gonna try to keep it clean, but you know, anytime we talk about sanitary districts, it kind of gets a little messy, um, similarly with my staff. Let's see. So, and, and I want this to be helpful. Mr. Daley had mentioned, as we, we approached the upcoming budget cycle, um, to kind of, you know, go through our departments and speak with you. So, for me, I'm, I'm a numbers guy, and I, and I'm looking at lots of budgets. Um, I wanna talk about the, um, departmental, and when I talk departmental, I'm talking about the real public works functions that are county and, and county-based budgets with your solid waste, your street signs, and your, your public work sanitary district budgets. Now, that sanitary district budget, similar to Brandy's, that one was established in 2017. And the director position at that time was under solid waste. That moved after that time over to the public works budget. We started with one person working, um, and we had zero equipment, so the budget has increased. I know last year, that was some of the questions that we received, um, you know, why have we seen an increase in that budget? You, you have a question? You're staring at me. Okay. So, if, if you have questions about the budget, I've tried to break it down, and we'll go into solid waste and what the different staff does and, and the personnel. But, um, in your, in your budget guidebook, you'll see 4230, 35, and 4240. Those are specific to solid waste. 41020 is specific to street signs, and then 41010 specifically deals with sanitary districts. Um, I mentioned the airport at this point. Um, the organizational structure's kind of changed for me a little bit in recent months. And, um, I used to report, um, to the deputy county administrator, so now I'm reporting to the county administrator directly, and I'm overseeing the county portion of the airport budget as well. So, I wanna briefly mention that, because we've also had some, um, increase in duties there, as we've had some change at the airport, and we're doing more maintenance there also. And this is not working.
She was holding way out there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There we go. Now I gotta back up. I think Dewayne was helping me. There we go. So, the five departmental budgets, um, just to show you what we're looking at, $4,050, $4,053,45, so over $4 million. The sanitary district, 435,000. $4,500, 345. So over $4 million. The sanitary district, $435,301. Streets and highways, that's our street signs, $20,601. Refugees collection, $758,940. Refugees collection transfer station, $211,462. And our biggest budget, refuse disposal, $2,624,041. And I'll talk about each one of these independently as we move forward and try to make it all come together in the end. I'm not, I'm getting Dwayne to help me back here. All right. So looking at our department broadly, we have currently 25 part-time and 11 full-time employees. So we have a pretty good part-time ratio in our department, 70% part-time employees, full-time positions. Public Works Director, of course, is full-time. In our solid waste department, we have four full-time. We have our solid waste manager, two full-time equipment operators, and one full-time scale house attendant. We have 25 part-time employees, 23 site attendants, one part-time scale house attendant, and one part-time maintenance person. In the streets sign program, we don't have any full-time staff, and we don't have any dedicated staff in the budget. We have personnel listed there. As I mentioned, it's been done by different folks over the years. Currently, the folks out of the sanitary district, our public work sanitary district staff are doing the street signs also. And at the airport, our public works sanitary district staff is also doing the maintenance facility work. You know, we do have a contract with CAS Air for the FBO and the management on their end. So we'll continue on. And just stop me if you have any questions. Again, solid waste. So I'm going to talk a little about solid waste now. And when you hear the terms refuse collection, refuse disposal, closed landfill, or recycling, all those will be dealing with solid waste, and that's our broad term within the public works department. When we talk about our citizen convenience centers, refuse collection consists of two budgets. That'll consist of 4230 and 4235 when you're looking at your budgets. We have our organizational chart, public works director. We have one manager, a solid waste manager. And then at each location, at Linden Convenience Site, Rockledge, Shenandoah Farms, Cooley Convenience Site, and the transfer station convenience site, we have compactor operators or convenience site attendants. And that's where a lot of those part-time employees are working. They, well, the transfer station, as you know, I mean, is open six days a week, actually seven, but on the convenience site side, we're open six. So we have men working in solid waste seven days a week. This is just an aerial of our Linden Convenience Site. And, well, it was an aerial of our Linden Convenience Site. I don't know if I can get back. Let's see. Dwayne got me? This is the newest site that we currently have. And any future sites, the beauty of this site is we do have dual compactors. And if anyone uses the Cooley site, you know that it gets overran, and we'll talk about my concerns as we move forward. But hopefully any sites that we do in the future will have two compactors and a dedicated recycle area that you can maneuver through. There's just a couple photos. That's a photo on the right of our Rockledge compactor. That's a very busy site as well in the South River District. And some of our recycled containers on the left side. And this is tough to read, but straight out of our budget book, we mentioned all the, earlier, the 4230 refuse collection budget, $758,940. Most of the budget comes down to part-time people and trash. At the end of the day, we don't have a whole lot of expense on those refuse collection budgets. Yes, sir?
The trash has been reported down to Page County.
Battle Creek landfill.
Is that the, yeah, is that the cost of that state is static or has increased?
It has increased, and I'll get to that here in a second. But from the convenience sites, all the trash from the four locations, satellite locations, will travel to our transfer station first. And Mr. Fox is correct. After that, we will load it, and we will send it to Battle Creek landfill in Page County.
Mike, can I ask?
Yes, ma'am.
Since we're on refuse collection, the Cooley site, is there any future expansion or reworking? That site is the one that I use?
Right.
And it's a hectic place.
Well, that's actually one of my, you know, I have some brief concerns and needs here toward the end.
Okay, I'm sorry to interrupt.
And, no, no, no. No, that's a great question. I think I'm almost there. Whoops. I think Dwayne, we're working against each other now. Future growth, that's one of my concerns. And the only, well, I can't remember the year now that it went off the CIP, but it wasn't a capital improvement plan. And the quarry was actually going to donate property, and we were going to be able to relocate and actually expand, you know, right there. But it changed ownership. The quarry changed hands, and that deal went out the window. That convenience site does more waste than trash than any other location. We will do at least a compactor a day. So it is at capacity or beyond at this point. And it is, it's really tight. I mean, we have multiple Saturdays throughout the year that we will pull two compactors in one day at that location. The location is such, in a good way for the county, we have a lot of stuff out on that side, a lot of development. So if somebody coming from Brown Town Road or out in the Fork District, they're probably not going to backtrack, you know, maybe from Chester Gap. They're probably not going to backtrack down toward the caverns if they're hitting the Applebee's or the Walmart. They're going to go through, it's on the way, and they're going to pull around. So I think we get trash flow from all over the county that will go out there. And it's so convenient that we get more trash there. I mean, it'll do more than double what Shenandoah Farms does each year. I mean, it's way above every other location in tonnage. The one thing that it is not in line with is recycle, and I do believe that is site-based also because you do not have the room really to get over, especially if the parking lot is full. We have the bus traffic there now also. So if you're trying to come in and you have two people stacked up in a line of traffic trying to throw away the waste, I think it discourages people from actually recycling at that location.
It does.
And I do think that some people toss things because it's just, you know, just so congested.
Which is designated parking for the recycle, which makes things kind of chaotic when you go in because the cars are parked wherever they want.
Right.
And people are trying to back in, back out, go around. So that's the, yeah.
Yeah.
It's a challenging.
Yeah. I've mentioned that the last few years, you know, I've discussed it, and, you know, I really think, especially if we have any more development at all on that side of town, we need to really look and consider finding a more suitable location that we can kind of spread it out. It'd probably be better to be a little less convenient where, you know, we can spread out on the ground a little bit and control. We also have trouble with people dumping stuff at that location. That's the worst. You know, we do have cameras there, but often, you know, they'll go around the back of the facility and dump large furniture. I want to thank the Sheriff's Department. They have been very good about helping us in monitoring. And if we have instances, they've been trying to help us with that. So we, I agree with you. We need to look at the future and see what we can do there. We do have plans for Shenandoah Farms Convenience Site. We've already started, you know, we've done a lot of the engineering and actually have some preliminary design. I'm not sure if we're going to continue forward at this point or not. I know we've tried to put some of our stuff on hold, but I think the initial and preliminary designs look really good. It would be similar to, I think, well, similar to Linden and Rockledge at the same time, a little more long, but give you area to, you know, get trucks in and out and people around them and get your recycling done and have two compactors. So I think that could be a good thing. And it could improve recycling because we don't have recycling in Shenandoah Farms currently. But does that answer your question?
It does. Thanks.
Yeah. I probably going to need your help with that.
Well, I think we ought to go see the quarry owner again.
Right. But another problem I wanted to talk about is recycling. You know, as you know, in 2017, the Chinese really tightened up recycling, and, you know, most of the world's recycling was going there. So we, you know, we've had to, you know, look at cost increases due to such over the last few years. Southern Scrap is where we took most of our recycling. Mr. Williams has been in the process of closing down for a couple years now. Most of the people that were using him have started to go elsewhere. We've had to start hauling plastics to Manassas in the last few years. A lot of the surrounding jurisdictions only accept number ones and twos because that's primarily the markable plastic, just because it's bad. Luckily, our contractor, Republic Services, that pulls our cans for us, they do have facilities in Manassas, so we're able to continue to collect one through seven with exception of styrofoam. Cardboard, we used to get some credit rebate for. Now we pay to get rid of our cardboard. So, and, you know, a little off-topic, but the, in the Regional Commission, I'm on the Solid Waste Committee, but, you know, they have recently, in recent years, we've been working on a study and just looking at options, coming together, and really determined it's better for private industry to, you know, do that type of thing. Ridge Runner Container in Frederick County is actually starting up some recycling with cardboard for their customers and looking to expand. They have a location in place, and they're hoping to start accepting more materials in the near future. So I do think there will be other opportunities in the future more locally. You know, the market really hasn't opened back up yet, but the people, they want to continue to recycle and try to do the right thing and put less in landfill. So we continue to watch what's happening. But again, there is an increase. And what we have seen, and I mentioned in my report, we've seen an increase on our convenience sites in recycling. So we haven't really seen a dip, although some of the things have went off track. We've been able to keep up with it. We've been able to find outlets for it, and we've seen people increase their recycling. So I think that's a good sign other than the budgetary increase. We also have increases each year on all of our solid waste budgets. Through our contract, we have a CPI adjustment up to 5%. So the hauling and disposal, they can all be adjusted annually. So, you know, the fuel prices being out helps a little bit because we have fuel fees. So that helps somewhat. It usually doesn't go up as much. We have seen increased tonnage. I mentioned that last week also. We saw, you know, in the springtime, especially with COVID, people cleaning out, even at the little sites, we saw increase, you know, waste coming to the facilities. So those are, those are the budgetary concerns that I have as we get through this fiscal year. I mean, last year, we were, you know, over on the recycling budget and our disposal line items. And those are big line items in those budgets.
And that overage results just simply the fact that there's more stuff brought out there?
Right. Yeah, there's more waste. And, you know, I mean, we can project very close, but we have, I mean, there's no way that I can cut the budget. If you, if you know you're seeing an increase of 2,000 tons per year or 3,000 tons, if you project based on this is the cost, you know, this would cost to haul it, this would cost to put it in a landfill, you know you're going to be pretty close. You can't cut that budget. It's going to, you're going to have to have, you know, what you're doing. And I'll get into disposal here in a second and show you a little graph and trend of how we've moved in the last few years. When we talk about refuse disposal, we're primarily talking about our transfer station in Bentonville. And in Bentonville, this is our organizational chart. We mentioned, you know, full-time positions, public works director, you know, I'm not in that budget, you know, they report to me solid waste managers in that budget. Our disposal equipment operators are within that budget and one full-time and one part-time scale house attendant. And then we have maintenance staff, a part-time person. The, and one thing I would mention, you know, a lot of people don't know that we have to have, we're required to have certified waste operators. If you run a transfer station or a landfill, you're required to have those. So when I started, we didn't have any, and we were up to three. Unfortunately, we lost one this year. We're down to two, myself and the solid waste manager. But we do have several licensures that we have to keep up with, and that license is through DEPOR. We also have public weighmasters. I know we talked about truck weights here recently. We have several public weighmasters on site. That's through the Virginia Department of Agricultural and Consumer Services. So we have several licenses that we have to keep up with there.
Now, do we have enough people to meet all of those demands?
Well, we, I think we do very good with 70% part-time folks. I think we do a real good job. We're going to try, we have hired two new equipment operators, and the code, it requires you to have a year minimum in solid waste before you can even consider sitting for the waste operator certification. And we want to make sure that they're going to be able to do the job, and they're going to stick with us because it's an investment because we have to send them to training. It has to be state-approved training. We typically send them to an engineering service. You can't, well, with COVID, they did offer some training online recently for the first time ever. But we, I think we're doing pretty good right now. We do have, you know, some flow. The one good thing on our, with our, we have a lot of retirees, and they're very dependable. So we're doing the best we can with what we have, and I think overall, it looks pretty good if you go down there. We get a lot of compliments at our transfer station. We try to keep our grounds neat. And our closed landfill, a lot of people don't realize that budget includes our closed landfill and the activities on the closed landfill. We have, you know, corrective action, groundwater monitoring, gas monitoring. So we're, it's always moving, and there's repairs to be made. And we also are inspected regularly by the EQ there as well. I'm going to aggravate Dwayne back here, I think. That's just a photo of the transfer station. Just shows you some of the trailers, and I think most of you have been up there. But the big building on top, the hill, that's the transfer station, and that's where all the waste in the county goes and dumped on that floor. And then we load it into the trailers, and then we have a contract for the hauling to go down the road. And, you know, I gave you some of those numbers last year, or last week. I don't, I'm not going to go through all those again unless you guys have questions. Couple photos of the tipping floor and the approach to the scale house. I'll get to concerns and needs in a minute. But we have done a lot of the major repairs that we need to do down in Bentonville. You know, a year or so ago, we did all the asphalt, and that hadn't been done since it was initially built in the 90s. So it held up a long time. We were able to do that. And then our tipping floor, we replaced our tipping floor also. So, you know, those are major projects on site that we needed to accomplish. So very happy we got those major things done. And this is just a photo, just from our engineers, and we've, I've showed you some of these before, just showing some of the groundwater wells and monitoring networks. I know I've had some questions about wells, and, you know, there's a whole lot of activity that we don't often think about when we're talking about solid waste because that closed landfill is a job. We deal with environmental consultants regularly, and we've done our best to do as much of that maintenance work as we can to minimize using environmental consultants to do stuff that we can do hands-on. So we do have a very good staff that we run lean, but we try to do as much as we can to improve down there, that we can improve our budget and save funds for the taxpayer. And I mentioned, this is, the refuse disposal budget overall is our biggest budget. And, you know, four full-time and two part-time folks. In the grand scheme of things, I think that we do pretty good with the tonnage we're running through there. We have, I think I mentioned all of the waste coming to the sites and our certifications. If you've been there, we do collection of white goods. We're bringing in brush waste. We're mulching that. We sell it back to customers. We're, we're mulching that. We sell it back to customers. We have, let's see, I mean, we recycle everything we do on all your other convenience sites. And we collect paint, oil. That's where all the oil goes in the county. So, it's, it's, it's a pretty happening place. A lot of people don't realize how much goes on in there. But I think we keep the trash flowing, and we, we usually don't hear anything unless, unless it stops flowing. Here's, here's a graph of landfill tons. I mentioned last week the increase we saw in fiscal year 1920. We were up to 37,033.88 tons. As you can see, in the last four years, we've continued to climb. So, I, I think that's a good sign for the economy. A couple of years ago, I did a little history, and over 10 years' time, we were averaging about 30,000 tons. And, and that was kind of right after the house and market crashed. So, I think that we're, we're heading in the right direction as far as starting to come back. And, and we should see some revenues too, but typically 55% of our waste that we see is from residences in the community, residential waste coming in. Needs and budgetary concerns. Again, recycling cost increases, the same on this site as the other locations. We just have to, we might have to travel further. We have increased tonnage, I just showed you, up over 3,000 tons from the previous year. We have up to 5% annual CPI increase on, on the contract for hauling. And then we have a 25 cent per ton per year increase to Battle Creek landfill. So, each year, even if we did not change in tonnage, you know, we could see a potential increase. So, we always have to be prepared in the budget. Also, I had, I was reviewing some data with Mr. Daly. One of my concerns is the commercial rate with the town of Front Royal. They pay 73.5% of the commercial tonnage rate, which is currently $69. And so, they're paying 50.72 per ton. And when you have continual annual increases, eventually, you're going to get to the point where you're subsidizing. And I, I think we're at that point now, because we're paying $34 per ton. And then I'd say approximately, you know, based on a truck, probably $18 a ton for hauling it to the landfill. And then that doesn't include our, our cost with our personnel loading or, or scaling. So, I mean, right there, that's $52 a ton.
Would the goal be to be even at no cost or no, no increase? What we want to do is, what it costs us to pay us that long to the town?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I think at this point, as you can see, you're, you're $34 a ton to Page County, to Battle Creek landfill. Right now, it's costing me about $18 for trucking per ton. And then I haven't included any cost for our facilities, our personnel at all. So, if, if it was equalized with the rest, the rest of the folks out there, then, then it would cover the cost. Yes, sir. Sir.
Approximately how many tons does, commercial tons does the town have a year?
Commercial? Well, I mean, it, it averages out, I mean, you might do 30 tons a month. It, it's a little up and down, but commercial tons is, is not as great, you know, as residential tons.
So, it's about 350 a year?
Commercial, but now residential, you're probably looking at 500 tons a month. But we don't charge for residential tons.
So, explain that to me. I, I'm trying to figure out what you're, what you guys are saying. So, you're saying the town pays a commercial rate, but they don't pay for residential?
We have an agreement with the town. That's, that's been many years. But basically, they have a residential pickup and a commercial pickup. So, they consider the large white trashcans commercial, that, you know, that you dump, and the blue bins residential. So, the 73.5% was based upon, you know, they said, well, we have, you know, 25% of the waste was residential at that point within that commercial load. I think my understanding is they've went away from that and it's all commercial this time, but that was the agreement we had. But we haven't, we've not charged for the residential pickup. And that, that is just, you know, been the policy for many years.
And I think some of the other, I want to say that the towns in Channondale County, they pay the tipping fees for the town.
In Channondale?
Yeah, and there again, I mean, of course, the argument is that the town citizens are paying county taxes, so we should take care of it. The one thing though, with the commercial, I think that needs to be looked at. Because I think for a while, the town, the county wasn't charging for commercial pickup years ago. And then you had your commercial haulers who were paying stuff, but then the town could go back in and undercut them because they didn't have to pay the tipping fees. So, that's something that, that probably should be re-looked at just from a fairness standpoint.
Yep, I agree. Anybody else?
So, do we have an MOA, you with the town, and how old is it? Like, when was the most?
Well, the, the agreement was discussed, and I, I sent Mr. Daly some of the documents. I think it was 2009, 2010 was when the town and the county both, you know, had action amongst the board. But I never found, I never did find the final MOA signed by both parties. But they both took action in meeting to discuss the 73.5% in the commercial agreement.
To discuss? So, we have requested a copy of the agreement, and so far, they're still looking.
Okay.
When did, when did we request that?
Month ago, three weeks ago.
Well, we just talked about, I mean, I have, I don't know, I haven't sent any official request to the, the town for that at this point. I've talked, I've talked to them over, you know, the years and, you know, you know, it's a, it was a note, you know, we'll review it annually. And I've talked to public works directors in the past and just to talk about, you know, is there any change in the number of dumpsters you have, you know, that type of thing? And then, so, it's officially written, but I, I could not find an official MOA signed somewhere. We do have board documents with discussion and votes about it. And then I know I've, I saw town work, you know, working documents as well and letters from both parties. So, we do have that, I don't, you know, but.
So, it's implied?
It's implied. I couldn't, I could not find a, you know, like, one blank document, but it is implied on both sides. Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
If it's not too late, I don't know if this could be an item added to the next liaison? When's the next liaison meeting? Is that this week?
Next Thursday, isn't it?
Next Thursday? I don't know.
I believe it's next Thursday.
I just wondered if that could be added on there just as a starting point for discussion.
Sure.
Yeah.
Could I, I want to.
Yes, ma'am.
Try to clarify something because I'm that person that always puts my trash on the truck on Thursdays and gets over there and is closed. That is, don't ask me, but that is my day to do it. And so, I know it is, the convenience sites are closed, because I'm, I'm probably not the only one that's doing this. That's why I want to clarify it. If the Bentonville site is open, but that's open to the big trucks that are bringing, correct? Is it open to contractors as well?
Yes.
Okay. So, if I have my trash on the truck, I can't go in and just put it in the dumpster? It's, it's got to be either the big hauling or contractors?
Technically, yes. I mean, if, I mean, if you wanted to consider opening the bottoms up on that day, we could. I mean, we have people that show up and, you know, we'll let them dump their trash if they do typically.
I'll always turn around and go home.
Yeah.
And, I mean, take mine home and then go back on Thursday, because I don't live that far away.
But if somebody comes in, I mean.
My concern is.
They'll usually let them go dump it.
That somebody's going to go and they're not going to want it sitting on the truck, and they're going to dump it off to inside road somewhere.
We don't get a whole lot of people, but usually if someone shows up and forgets, you know, we'll let them throw the trash away.
Okay. Well, I, I want to make that for the people, you know, like me that do it. I don't know why, but it's just like, Wednesday is my day.
Yeah, and I mean, if, if that's something you want to, you know, if you wanted to open it, I mean, it can create confusion if maybe one site would not, but if you, you know, you have staggering schedules for refuse collection. Because trying, on the website even, trying to say, okay, well, this is the convenience site at the transfer station, and this is the commercial, often causes confusion. You know, and I've tried different things to distinguish them. I, I'm not a, you know, I don't object if, you know, you decide you want to open a site. I mean, it would be up to you. If we went back to opening all the sites, of course, we would need more personnel. You know, that'd be 12 hours support.
No, I just wanted to, to clarify for the people out there on that, because I know we have had, on Panhandle Road, there was a dump site there. I know off one of the roads up in Bentonville, there was construction stuff dumped along the road. And so, I figure that they weren't allowed to dump as well. So, if, if the contractors, when they load up whatever.
Is that where all the tires were on Panhandle, on the?
I think it was a lot of stuff there.
Yeah, it was tires and a lot of just.
And we worked with the.
It was a lot of building.
With the park service, we worked with them.
Right.
To.
So, that's what I'm, I'm hoping.
Let them come in.
To get the word out, that if you're a contractor and you go up there, that they don't turn around and then go someplace like that and dump it.
Well, contractor, I mean, they may turn around if they don't want to pay a fee. But, you know, that, I mean, I'm not saying, you know, I'm just saying that might, you know, if a contractor comes in and those were open and they don't want to pay a fee, they could still turn around and go out.
Absolutely, but, yeah.
But most of, most of your big contractors have, you know, dump trailers or they're using dumpster containers from.
I'm sure most of them, it would be somebody that just didn't know.
We really don't have any trouble, yeah. I mentioned some of the, the facility upgrades that we did that were positive. And I think actually I mentioned in our last budget cycle, you know, we need to be considering a scale replacement because our scales are still original. So, you know, I had, you know, put in and requested for funding for scales, or at least to start, you know, looking at that. And, and I know I've had discussions with you guys about maintenance facilities. And, you know, my primary concern, especially right now as we approach winter time with COVID, if you can see the top-left photo, that little teeny building, that's, that's kind of our warmin' house. And, and then this little outlook building down here on the bottom, you know, you, you can only get, well, you can't get two men in there and be six foot apart. That's, that's where the guys will go to get their, you know, drink of water or coffee. They really don't have a, a good facility up there. We need to get some kind of building up there minimally for them, a, a better warmin' house. And, and I think that, that's a priority that we need to accomplish sooner rather than later.
The Cooley, too, the Cooley building is small.
Well, you only have one man there at a time. You know, and up here on this floor, you got to, you, you could have four men at a time working. And if you got four men, I mean, you, in that, well, either one of them.
That's not, yeah.
You know, I mean, and, and the, I'm not talking about the, that one's got tools in it, the bigger one. I'm talking about the one on the left on the top picture, that little small one as well. So, we really need to do something there. Like to, I'd like to eventually see, and we had some plans, and, you know, we've remodeled that CIP, but really like to see them have something with a shower and a bathroom up there. We have one bathroom at the bottom that's very old. So, you know, when you're running trucks, it's tough to take a break and, and go all the way across there. It's, it's, it's kind of a mess. But it'd be nice to have something there real close when you're dealing with waste that you could get in and take a shower if you need it to, and, and even clean up before you went home, if you'd like to, have some type of locker room. Closed landfill, compliance, maintenance and repair, those are always concerns. I know Ms. Coler's had some questions for me this evening. You know, we get questions anytime we're doing work down there. But, you know, I've, we've had some discussions about some of the stuff happening there. We're always monitoring water and gas, and we're very, you know, regulated by the state of Virginia. And we want to do our best, our job is to keep any kind of contaminants on our property. And, you know, that's our goal. Anytime we have anything happen on the landfill, we're regularly monitoring, and the EQ is going to review. We have corrective action. We've been in corrective action since 2000 for groundwater. So, we, we continually have groundwater updates and monitoring. We just received our reports last week. I think I shared with Mr. Daly. We're doing everything we need to do, and, and we're doing good at, at meeting our state requirements. But we need to consider those. You know, a lot of times you don't understand why do we need money there? But that's in that disposal budget also. All right. Public Works Sanitary Districts. So, sanitary district guys, I mentioned earlier, they, they're doing the roadside maintenance, sanitary district maintenance for those that, that we take care of and currently doing maintenance at the airport also. For the street signs or E911 road signs, basically Public Works Director, Public Works Foreman and Staff. No real problems there budgetarily. We're doing good. We didn't request anything last year. We've seen some improvement, had less theft. Some of the hardware's helped with that. We've changed some hardware over the years. That's just a photo of one of the guys doing a repair there. No real budgetary concerns.
Going back to that.
Sir.
Streets and highways, the last slide?
The picture?
Yeah, it has a little, let you know about the director and the.
Oh, Public Works, yeah. Right there.
That one.
Yep.
How many people does that totally take care of?
Well.
And I know, I know that you said that maintenance was basically, was taken care of on a first come, first served type of thing.
Okay, so, we have a foreman, and we have four maintenance workers. Two of those workers are pretty much designated to work in Channondale Farms. Well, yeah, actually four total. We have the foreman and one person typically working in. And I'll, I'll, I will get to that question in a second, but.
Okay.
So, Trap, you've met Travis probably and Jake, and they work in Linden Heights, Lakefront Royal, Wildcat Drive, and Osprey Lane. And then we have two newer employees working in Channondale Farms. And Channondale Farms Foreman is, you know, specifically in the Channondale Farms budget. But that, and the foreman actually had an accident. He's out right now. So, our Public Works Foreman and Staff are covering, you know, those needs also, working with me. So, typically, we have, you know, the Public Works guys that do the smaller sanitary districts handling the signs all the time. So, it's usually one to two men that handle that. But we don't have any dedicated staff there. Like I said, we just, that's just part of our duties. And that, and it's working fine. I mean, we're, we're getting it, we're getting it done. Usually, they can do, you know, the sign repairs, updates, usually a day a month. I mean, we try to do them if we have something that's urgent. We try to work it in, you know, as fast as we can, but I'd say about eight hours a month. All right, sanitary districts, county maintained. I just named them off a minute ago. Channondale Farms is one that's, you know, it's kind of new to me. I haven't been involved with the farms as much in the past, other than sending some public works help out there. So, this is, this is one of those kind of evolving, I guess, I guess our positions. We're, we're still working out the sanitary district manager. We're receiving applications. Mr. Daly and I talked about it, yeah, this week. We'll, hopefully, we'll have a pool of applicants mainly for the farms. We were talking about hiring that person, you know, kind of in a more broad sense. So, I just kind of stuck them in there for now, you know, reporting to me. It's on field, but hopefully, we will be able to use them, you know, across the board in the sanitary districts.
So, who is the, you're the Public Works Director. Who's the sanitary district manager?
That's to be, to be determined.
That's vacancy.
Yeah, that's the vacancy. We talked about one for the farms. So, my, part of my role now is I'm the manager for the county for Linden Heights, Lakefront Royal, well, basically everybody up there now since Bob departed. So, I handle all the budgets, and then I deal with H2O, POA, or Advisory Board. I deal with each board. So, that's my role. So, looking, you know, with the transition and, and Bob was handling that position. We had a sanitary district manager for the farms when I'd started here, and he'd been gone for a number of years. Bob went through that interview process on several occasions and really didn't come up with any applicants that were really suitable for the position. So, he really just handled the management part for the county for years. So, we had discussed, you know, moving forward. And actually, part of the agreement is we have a dedicated manager for the farms, so.
That was what I was going to ask. So, that, that particular, the way that that is structured in the org chart indicates that there may be a sanitary district manager for all of those?
Well, it, it's kind, and that's what I said, yeah. Well, well, and, and that, that could be, that could be possible. That could be possible. That could be possible.
So you're leaving all your, you're leaving everything over?
Right. So what I, you know, and then we've talked about that a little bit, but I think that whoever's in that position, you need to have someone who knows something about all of those sanitary districts other than myself.
Gotcha.
As far as the people who you have to speak to and what we're doing there and what's happening, you know, and if I was not here, it would be great to have someone who could step in even if temporary.
On the show, right, yeah.
And we've looked at that full and part time. And I think Mr. Daly's indicated that they're going to report to me either way. So if they're under Shandor Farms, I think they should still learn more about everybody.
Sure. And they're charged back to wherever they're working.
Right. So if they're put specifically under Shandor Farms, then, you know, they would only work there and there alone. And that would be it, and charge that budget. And that's one of the reasons, and one of the reasons you see the Public Works Sanitary District budget has increases because, you know, rather than put two people, two additional people in Shandor Farms, we've put them under Public Works. Because we don't need full-time people all the time. But we've had situations where the two full-time men in Shandor Farms had the flu, where I could take my two men that I had and send them to work, but I couldn't do it the other way.
Right.
You know, because they were just dedicated there. So we, and the POSF has been very good about allowing us to do that. And they may, you know, they may not, they may have objection, you know, I mean, I don't know. I mean, they may want, say, hey, we want to go back to having someone dedicated to us again, rather than having a Public Works guy here. You know, I mean, I think you have that maneuverability in their budget if you want to do that. You can listen to it.
The foreman comes back-
Right.
Then, then there's almost a little bit of a duplication for them.
Right. So, yeah, and I hope he's back soon. But the foreman, I can't pull him out and send him to Linden Heights or to Lakefront Royal because he's specifically dedicated to Shandor Farms. So we're doing our best to try to give a little bit of freedom there. And that's the other thing you have to realize with a lot of these budgets, there is revenue. In refuse disposal, you have revenue through commercial waste. In Public Works, we charge hour for hour for men and equipment for the work that we perform for each sanitary district. And I'll mention roughly, you know, briefly those other budgets that I do. Yes, ma'am?
So, just so I've got it straight. So you said you had four people on staff?
Yeah.
So that means the foreman and one person for Shandor Farms, foreman and one person for all the others?
Right. Well, right now we have, right, well, the Shandor Farms person is not within my budget. So right now we have, you know Travis, he's our Public Works Foreman, and we have Jake that works in the small sanitary districts. We have two other guys, Nick, we recently hired Nick Davis. And then we have Andrew Moorfield.
So you have three assigned to Shandor Farms then?
We have, yes. So we have, but two of them are Public Works and one specifically Shandor Farms. So we have three men in the farms right now, but two of them are on our Public Works budget.
So one, the two are on, are all of these Warren County employees though?
All of Warren County employees, yes.
And we get reimbursed for everyone through the Shandor District fees?
Everyone through fees, other than like the foreman for Farms because he's specifically within their budget. He's, they pay everything.
They pay his salary.
They pay his salary.
And then we pay him. Well, that's what I said.
They have their own sanitary district budget. It's taken directly out of that budget, yeah. And we collect the funds, so.
Okay, so.
Yeah.
So kind of the overall idea is, if you look back on this page one, is that Mike will have primarily solid waste and districts, and then some liaison over here with the airport and a little bit doing street signs. But the two primary people that would report to him would be the sanitary district's-
Club.
Manager and the solid waste manager.
Okay. So the, just so I get a good understanding, sanitary district manager is going to be based here and basically delegate from here what needs to be done and managed from here? He won't be on site at any of these places?
Well, I mean, he probably will be on site, but not every day.
His office will be here.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, like if, you know, we're doing a project or complain or a rural addition project or, you know, even like the VDOT contract you asked about snow removal, you know, you have a manager that will go and check out and make sure that the work is performed.
So he'll have a desk in Mike's office, but he's not going to be there. He's going to be out in the field.
Okay.
Yeah. Makes sense.
Yeah, yes.
Yeah. This is just a little map that shows you where the districts are located throughout the county. And I think most of you guys are familiar with the sanitary districts. This is Shannon Woods, which is situated right up to the Wildcat Drive sanitary district. So this is the hearing that will be coming up soon. So this is one of the, potentially could be the next maintained sanitary district that we have in the county, depending on where the board would go. But I wanted to include this as part of my discussion because I think it's important when we're looking at the roles and the concerns that we have. Because as we maintain more, and just a few photos here of work, but as we maintain more miles of road and more districts, you know, the, and even my part of the job, you know, you're dealing with another board or another POA or Advisory Board, you're going to need some administrative help or support. You might need another person to help you out because you can only stretch two men on, you know, so many districts. And what happens also, and I should mention, is when we have snow, the two guys that are working in the smaller districts, you know, once we're good there, we're pulling into Shandor Farms and we're the backup support. So if we add on another one and another one without adding any more personnel, we're actually essentially going to take away some support from Shandor Farms when we're in a snow situation and a response time. We talked about the budget number earlier. This year it's $435,301. And again, that includes the Public Work Director salary in there. So with me, there's five full-time staff. Non-departmental, you guys, you know, will see the information come through. I'll work with the HOAs, POAs, Advisory Boards and develop their county budgets. And I actually have been overseeing the four budgets excluding the farms for the last several years. I guess we started, and that's kind of how that Public Works sanitation district started until 2017. We only had Shandor Farms. 2017, January 1, we took on Lakefront Royal. That's, my role changed July of that year. November of that year, we took on Linden Heights. 2018, we took on Wildcat Drive. 2019, we took on Osprey Lane. And it looks like in 2020, we might potentially take on Shannon Woods. So we are an evolving department and, but we, we're picking up more roads, we're picking up more boards to deal with, more maintenance, more contractors needed, et cetera. But each, you know, and I, you, some of you were alluding to the revenue, you know, anything that comes through, I mean, if we order stone for a specific road system, it comes right out of their budget, their budget, not the Public Works budget. You know, when we do work, we charge the line item for each specific budget. So if I put in a road pipe, or my men do, I'm going to charge them for the hours. And, you know, it was eight hours and we had, you know, a mini excavator there and a dump truck at this cost. This is the total. And it's going to be charged to the specific line item, you know, maintenance labor. So everybody's charged for the work we perform. We also have the non-county maintained sanitary districts. We discussed those briefly last week also. They do not have budgets. Thankfully, I don't have to work with their budgets. You guys approve their rates. But we do have work on our side. You know, the Commissioner's Office, the Treasurer's Office, they send out the bills. We do, we have to look at it. And Shelley and administration helps with that, but we send out the letters with, you know, the collection fees, after the collection fee, and then we have to disperse the payment back to the group. So we do have some legwork for that also. I already mentioned, if, the more sanitary districts we have, we're going to need additional staff and support. We're going to eventually require additional equipment. I had actually put in my budget last year. I think that we're getting to the point that we need to pursue another tractor to be able to keep up, especially when we're trying to grade and we have limited moisture as we spread throughout the county and get more miles of road. Public Works staff performing maintenance work at the airport also influences our staffing needs. As things have changed at the airport, we're doing a lot of the, you know, spraying along the chain link fence and we're doing a lot of the bush hogging and into the big field maintenance. The FBO is concentrating on the smaller grass mowing up around the terminal and actually run the airport and doing flight instruction, which makes sense.
So Mike, if we buy a large piece of equipment like that, do we, do we spread the cost of that piece of equipment out over these sanitary districts? Or how do we depreciate? How do we do that?
I charge them hourly for the equipment as I use it. So I'll charge them hour for hour. You know, I, I can't tell you, you know, I'd have to go back and do the figures to tell you how long it'll take me, but it's really dependent on how much work and how many miles of road we're using it on. You know, I might have a month where I have a $10,000 label beer bill and I might have $30,000 in one month. So, I mean, essentially I could collect enough money to pay for a tractor in two months, but, you know, that would just be just on raw numbers, not-
Okay.
Overall cost. So that cost is spread.
So you've, you've taken care of making sure that the cost of the equipment is built into the program?
Right. So we charge an hourly rate for the use of the equipment, an hourly rate. And the hourly rate for a man is, you know, his salary, you know, whatever his benefits are, insurance.
Sure.
You break that down into an hourly rate. So, you know, if, you know, like if you're using a Public Works maintenance person in the farms, I mean, they're paying his whole salary and benefits per hour.
Is, are the POAs covering at this point, do they cover the cost of everything or is the county-
Cover the cost of, well, they're not going to cover the cost of the entire budget because a lot of my work, because my, like I told you before, because I was solid waste manager previously. So, you know, my budget or my salary initially was in, even as Director, was in refuse disposal. And then it got moved over to sanitary districts. So, but a lot of my function, which I've been in discussions with you a lot on closed landfill and solid waste, I spend a lot of time in solid waste. At least half of my time.
Taking you out of that?
Yeah. So if you take me out of there, you know, then your man-hours are, a lot of those are covered. But we still do things outside of, you know, even the airport. I mean, we've, we have maintenance built into their budget. So we charge for time spent at the airport as well. So at the end of the day, I mean, but there are still some projects. I mean, we've helped do, you know, some work at the schools before, you know, and before, you know, like in their leachate ponds, help cleaning, et cetera. Occasionally we'll do, you know, some other projects elsewhere. But I think overall, we're doing really good with our employees. You know, I don't know that we have every hour, but like I said, we have some of that built into street signs and other county functions.
But bottom line is the-
Right. So the sanitary districts themselves don't totally absorb everything. Shandor Farms, if you have those men in there every day of the year, they're probably going to pay those men salaries for the whole year, you know. But I mean, if I pull them out for a week to work somewhere else, they might not pay the entire year. But overall, I think it's very close, other than those county functions and myself, which, you know, like I said, is spread. Makes sense? And the other thing I had there was the, at the airport, you know, currently our, we have all our equipment stored out there and there could be some, you know, they've talked about more potential hangar needs and, you know, if we, we need to look and see, you know, what we can do if, you know, if we need to, you know, move out and give them a little more room. We need to make sure that we consider that as we, you know, look at the budget. And again, you know, the airport's not typically a Public Works function. You know, we have the airport manager, but, you know, I do communicate currently with the airport manager and the Airport Commission. We have a meeting this week. So that's part of my job too, that technically my budget, you know, the line item is in the sanitation district budget. So you have to consider, you know, that time. And our maintenance staff, and it's basically, again, Travis and Jake that are out there working. But we do, you know, occasionally have overlap, one of the men from the farms, especially if we're training, we'll try to get the men, when they're new, to work with some other guys, to learn other things, to be able to branch out. That's just a picture of the airport and, you know, the airport budget, which don't really need to get into that. I just wanted to mention it because, you know, that's part of where I'm at now and the Public Works guys there. And really, I think that's about it for tonight unless you guys have any other questions out there.
The one thing you didn't mention was snow removal.
Right.
And I know we, we contract with VDOT out some of our equipment, but then we also contract with other private industry to help push roads here as well.
Right.
My understanding was we pay out a little bit more than we bring in. VDOT only pays so much. I understand that. But what, what areas do we contract out privately in the county versus?
Well, we have, we actually put out a bid for snow removal. We do each year. We didn't receive anything this year on the initial and unfortunately, but we do have, we do have some contracts in place that can be renewed. We did put it out again. We have, I think there'll be a contract coming up on next week's agenda, or actually two, a renewal for U. Henry and Lakefront Royal and then BMB, who, you know, typically performs work in the farms if needed. The only place that we use a contractor all the time, and that was per request of the sanitary district, is Lakefront Royal. And U. Henry has performed work there. And, yeah, Mr. Roush, the POA president's here this evening. He's done a good job. He's been there for years and he continues to service that area. Now, we will go in and, you know, we'll communicate. Our staff will go in and check the roads and call him if needed and go in and, you know, get an update from him, myself or Travis. But he's done a good job. If we were to lose that and didn't have that, I mean, I would have an overnight need for another employee. I mean, like right now. I don't feel scared because, like I said, U. has been very faithful and true, done a good job. His contract is coming up for renewal next Tuesday.
Right. I was at the meeting where they-
Other than that, we don't have any, anyone else that regularly is contracted to push snow. We handle the snow. Now, if we would get into a situation, like we've had some, it's been a few years and I hope we don't have any this year, but we've had some big snows. And in the farms, you know, we have heavy equipment contracts you recently approved, like GEI. We would call GEI and say, we need a track loader. And please put one at the bottom of the mountain and put one at the top of the mountain. Now, you know, there's, you know, there's a mobilization rate and hourly rate. But if you don't get it, I mean, GEI does a whole lot of work. Somebody else is probably going to get them if it gets real bad. So usually if we're anticipating a big snow, we will call in a contractor, but that is just more on a need-as-needed basis. Mr. Henry's the only one that we use on a regular basis. With VDOT, we sign up for snow removal and we're plowing roads that were already going over. We're getting there before VDOT, typically in Shandor Farms. And then they pay us, we sign up as a contractor, and they pay us based on their contractor rates. sign up as a contractor, and they pay us based on their contractor rates that are established.
Okay.
So we're, we're going to have to go over the roads anyway.
Right, right, I understood that. I just didn't know if, if it was basically in that area or it, you know?
Well, I mean, they would pay us if there's a situation. I mean, they're, you know, I mean, if we were, you know, if they say it was bad in Shangri-La, I don't think VDOT would have any heartache if we, you know, plowed Shangri-La and go all the way to Bentonville to get the trash moving, again, if they're stuck on Bentonville Road or 66. It's, I mean, they have, you know, the ability to, to watch us and see what's happening, and they're going to have a report each day, and, you know, if, if there's a problem or concern, they're going to let us know. But I don't think they would have any heartburn if we were to do other roads. But we're not really called, you know, to do any other roads. We, we just kind of work in those areas we're already in. You know, Shannon Woods, for instance, might be something that they may be, you know, said, hey, you guys are plowing in there, you know, go ahead and plow that first half mile for us because it's state maintained.
Right. Now, do, does V, I know at one time, VDOT plowed fire stations. Are they doing that, or is, are you doing that as public works to keep the fire stations open?
Well, we have plowed out at Shandau Farms before, but we don't typically do those. You know, there's a lot of snow plowing done by Parks and Rec also.
Okay.
So there, Parks and Rec is typically doing your parking lots, PSB.
I think they do the park, the fire stations.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
If, if the winter's been anything like the rest of the year, who knows what we're going to get?
Anything else? Con, I figured he'd have contract questions. He usually asks me a contract question every time.
I'm not going in.
But, you're not going there?
Not going.
We're do, we, we still have several years left on our contract with Battle Creek, and I think 2023 is when it's up for renewal. But I usually anticipate that one from Mr. Fox.
Additional questions?
Anything else? No?
Thank you.
Yeah.
That's very dramatic, yes.
Yeah, thank you.
Do we need a battle break?
Sure.
Break? All we have is one item as far as the budget agenda.
If you want, I'm just asking if anybody
I'm just saying, I mean, that's all we've got, we'll be out of here.
I'm, I'm ahead of that.
Okay. Thank you. Discussion for fiscal year 2021 and 2022 budget work session. I guess Mr. Daley, you're going to take care of that?
Yes, sir. As a follow-up to Mike and Brandy this evening, we have planning and parks on November 4th and fire and rescue, and probably the sheriff on November the 10th. And then the next one will be the treasurer and commissioner and social services.
They are on this?
They're not on that. Yeah, they're not on that.
Yeah, they're not on here on this budget.
No, they're not on the sheet. This, I'm talking about the presentations, like what you saw.
Oh, okay.
Oh, okay.
One minute.
So that it is preparation as part of moving into this schedule. The schedule is pretty much what you see here. If there are questions about it, things you want to move, otherwise it would be on your agenda next week for adoption.
I think the agenda's built such that it has some flexibility, and I know the main thing we try to do is get the budget adopted by May 1, because that's when the school has to let their contracts.
Correct.
So that's what we've always been able to do.
Yes, correct.
So I'm, I'm okay with putting it on there.
Okay. Do you want to say anything about the strategic plan, sir?
Not right now.
Okay. Then that's all I have. We will be, we'll be sending people who live north of the bridges home tomorrow afternoon about 4:00. So you'll see, if you're looking for somebody, they may not be here.
Okay.
So Mr. Daley, just so, anybody watching or had, for clarification, there, there will be a, is it, is it a protest? Is that what they're, or commemoration?
Demo, I, I guess I'd call it a demonstration.
Okay, so there's going to be
Not really a protest of something. It's recognition of Mr. Floyd, the, Mr. Floyd's birthday.
Okay. And so my understanding is that this demonstration is going to occur only on the South Fork
Correct.
Of the bridge, not North Fork.
Correct.
So they're going to come out of Riverton and turn left?
Yes. Or right, because
All right, so they're going to cross, they are going to cross the highway?
Part of, with, they'll be escorted.
Okay, escorted part of the highway. So there will be a demonstration on both sides of the bridge. That demonstration will start at 5:30, but the
Approximately.
But, all right, so they'll, but they'll be walking between 5:15 and 5:30, I'm
Probably start walking about 5:30, and it's very flexible about when they get up there and when they start. Their target is 5:30, ma'am.
Okay.
And they'll be on the sidewalks.
And will there be any electronic notification to commuters or drivers that, that there's a demonstration going on and that they should be careful, slow down, look out, or is there anything like that planned?
You can hit the, we can hit some town signs out there. The sheriff's office is going to slow drive the outer lanes to, to keep cars behind them and pour and funnel them into the fast lanes in the middle.
Okay.
So to try and keep cars out of those outside lanes.
Yeah, I've had multiple phone calls today from people who were just concerned about them, you know, coming home from work, should they make alternate route plans? You know, should we notify people of, to take alternate routes? That sort of thing. I've gotten all day long. So I just wanted to make sure that, that I understood the plan so I could answer the questions when I get them.
And it's very, not to avoid the question, but it's very fluid, because we don't know exactly what's going to be out there.
Right.
And when they get to the halfway point, they're basically going to stop for nine minutes, and then after that, they're going
Then they're going to turn around and come back.
So they're going to go halfway up the bridge?
Yes.
That's the plan.
That's the plan.
Halfway up the bridge, pause, wait eight minutes.
Eight and a half minutes, right.
Turn around, go back.
Okay.
Sheriff's office is meeting with both Mr. Porter and some other groups in town tomorrow.
So there is a, just, just making this clear for everybody to know, there is also a celebration of Dr. Brad's life scheduled at 2:00 PM at the Riverton United Methodist Church, which is center of this event. So, you know, I, and though I'm, I'm certain there will be a lot of people there. So I was, yeah, I just wonder if, if the pastor of that church, if it might make good sense if we alert him to?
He is aware.
He's aware? Okay. All right. I'm not trying to, I'm just trying to, to answer questions. I, I under, yeah. Okay.
And it's a primary, one of the primary reasons, Mr. Porter wanted to use Riverton United to stage, but that's a primary reason why he couldn't do that because of Dr. Brad's celebration of life at the same place.
Right. Okay, thank you guys.
Mr. Porter, he will go into the Baptist Church. It's another block, the show down the road.
It's the old
It's the old Riverton.
It's the old Riverton United, it's the original church that was built in the 1800s. Yeah, and there's a parking, there's parking there as well.
Before we adjourn, we discussed at our last meeting, and Mrs. Oates had made suggestion that we create a panel to look into Shandau Farms, and I'd like to get that going if we could.
Well, we'll, before we do that, we thought about, we thought about doing that and we want to do that, but I want to hear more of what the town or the county attorney and the count, a county sanitary district can do for us to make sure that we're doing all that we can so we can answer questions for that panel. So they don't have to relearn the program either.
So, so are we not going to try to go ahead and find people to be on that panel?
I'm sure that we can start looking, but I don't want to advertise until we have the knowledge to be able to do it correctly.
Okay, well, I, I personally just want to go on record that I want to get this done and get it done quickly. I don't want to be caught behind the eight ball of wishing we had been more proactive and resolute about getting this thing done. I feel like we just keep kicking it and
I don't, I don't believe that we're kicking it, but
Okay, well.
You understand what you're saying.
What is the, what's the timeline for the next presentation by Mike with respect to the, he and, and
Mrs. Jordan.
Yeah.
That was to be on the 4th.
The 4th of?
That's your next work session, 4th of November.
Okay.
And then after that, we should be able to set up the people and, and the panels and start to work.
Okay.
So we're moving the meeting on the 3rd to the 4th. The regular meeting because of the election, which we normally do, and then it'll be followed by a work session.
So, well, you usually on the day meeting, you have a work session
Right, right.
In the afternoon, so we were going to do this in the work session.
Right. One other thing too, and I just throw down for consideration now, don't expect any comments, but just something to think about. I think tonight went relatively well as far as time-wise, there's a lot of information presented. I think everybody did a good job. But I was just thinking that, just for consideration, if maybe future work sessions, when they're not piggybacked on a regular meeting, if we start those at 6, it may not make it for a shorter meeting, but at least we'd be able to get out here a little bit sooner too. Just something to think about, and we'll discuss it next time.
Let me throw one other thought out for you, sir, to think about with that, is at your third week meeting, you usually have a closed session. And there's an advantage to having that closing time-wise, for you to have that closed session at 6:00. If we do that, and that's what we have planned next week, is the closed session at 6:00, then you may want 6:00 for what supervisor on this meeting, on the 4th, or rather, on the 10th, excuse me, on the 10th of the work session meeting, for what supervisor Colors was talking about being open, having an open forum if anybody wanted to come in to talk.
For the work session.
Talk as long as they could want.
I was, I was here at 6:00 in order for people to come in. No one came, but it hasn't been wildly publicized that we were doing it. And I did have some people ask if we could consider, instead of three minutes, five minutes, and that they would, at least the ones that are asked, would be happy with five minutes. And that would give 11 people a chance to talk in an hour.
It would, I agree, I'd like, I'd like to say yes, but it all, it all depends on how many people we've got.
Right, right, but
We had to start with a
There again, you know, I, I don't mind being here an hour early, but
Yeah.
It's going to give them one meeting a month to do that when we
That would do, that would do, GBI, we're doing a month, and we're going to work to keep these work sessions under, well under three hours.
Right, so.
The other thing too is, I know, I thought, I'm not sure, if all three of newly elected officials, they talked about having town hall meetings in their district. I know Ms. Colors had one, I'm not sure if anybody else did or not, but that's another option too, to get additional input.
Have it in your district.
Yeah, and unfortunately, COVID has present, has
Right, that's a problem. Right, I understand.
Yeah.
And, I, again, if we can get a place big enough to get people in, I, I would love to get back to doing that. It was, the time I did it, it was a really good meeting.
Move to adjourn?
Is that it? Do a second.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Adjourn.
Yep.